I'd like to call Building and Grounds to order. Will the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Morsy?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here. Motion approved, agenda is proposed.
Second.
Motion in proper second. Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Schmidt?
For New Business, we have a request by House of Hope for interest in 519 East Third Street for future project.
Got a second on that?
A second.
All right, we have a motion in proper second for the request of House of Hope. Is there any discussion on that item?
Noel, this is under your name, could you explain this a little bit?
Certainly. Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We have been working with the House of Hope, their existing location at 222 Walnut, as you may recall, where the CBS is built now. They're kind of the only remaining building left over on that corner. There's also a parking lot owned by David Larson. We've been looking to redevelop that corner. As a part of that, we've been discussing with them the potential of acquiring, can they hear me, of acquiring that property. Working with them, obviously, they want to replace it. They had actually approached us about the condition of that property and needing to potentially replace it. We have the property at 519 East Third Street that we had originally went into a development agreement with the former Judge Stout to kind of dismantle the interior of that and move it. He's been having problems trying to dismantle that, having it break apart and all that, so he is preparing a letter to us to rescind that agreement. The reason we brought it to develop, to Building and Grounds is because we have not yet rescinded his agreement, but they'd like a little bit more of a commitment from the city to move ahead in their fundraising efforts for their project. You can see in the attached letter to the Building and Grounds Committee from Barbara D. about their plans for a 12-plex building on this location. Again, we think this would be an excellent land use decision for this area and go in. House of Hope's been a good partner for the city of Waterloo, so we're asking for your concurrence to move ahead with kind of reserving this lot and working with them on this project, even though we're still in the process of rescinding the previous development agreement with the Judge Stout.
Noel, aren't, isn't 519 and if we're looking at it 515, aren't those basically homes that are eligible for historical listing? I mean, those are, in their day, they were gracious, big old homes, especially the one on the corner, and I'm just wondering why we want to destroy, destroy more of our history.
519 East Third Street's in horrible condition, of course, in terms of looking at it with the Building Department staff. We deemed that it was not rehabilitatable, which is why we had previously approved Judge Stout to dismantle that. It's just in horrible condition. It's been vacant for a number of years. I believe 515 is occupied. Now, I'm not, I'm not sure of the status of what that looks like on the inside. Obviously, the outside is in pretty rough shape as well.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, our staff is, the staff to the Historic Preservation Commission, so we're very much in favor of historic preservation. At the same time, some buildings are probably too far gone to properly preserve. I know that using historic tax credits on single-family home gets a little expensive, too, to try and aid you, because you have to preserve it back to all the original details. So, a lot of single-family homeowners do not choose to go that way.
But, but even if it wasn't to get the historical designation, those are older homes, and I don't know what is the basis to say something's rehabilitatable, but if, if that may be the case, we may not have the Gilbertville Depot anymore either, Noel, because people wanted to tear that down. And I think that these are two properties in an area that should have a historical designation, just for what it is and what it's meant to the city of Waterloo, and I'd be totally against somebody trying to tear this down. I didn't know it was set for demolition. Now that you're saying that, I'm against that, and I'd be against this project and tearing down either of these state-owned homes.
And I know there's representatives from the House of Hope here to talk about their project, if you'd like to hear from them as well.
Noel, has the historical group, have they been made aware of this, and have they had any response or communication?
I think they were informed of the previous agreement with Judge Stout. They don't have any actual authority over it, since they're not actually in a historic district within the city of Waterloo or locally designated. But I believe they were made aware of the previous intentions of Judge Stout to dismantle it.
And, but it was to be dismantled and rebuilt, correct?
It was been dismantled and rebuilt out in the county.
Correct.
But anything, he was, he was mainly going for the interior work, because the exterior was in rough shape. He was going to salvage what he could on the exterior, and we were going to demolish the rest.
I thought he was going to pay for the demolition, too, wouldn't he?
I believe yes, he was.
If I remember right.
Yes.
They were going to take it apart. And then the other house, I mean, is this a new occurrence, that house now is part of the conversation, because the house next door, I hadn't heard that mentioned previously?
House next door is privately owned right now, so they would be working to acquire that. To get the size of 12-plex, they would need, they would need both properties.
And so, from a, from a timing standpoint, what is the timing issue here, would you say?
I don't know if you want them to answer that from the House of Hope, or...
If there's someone here that could maybe just speak to what your plans are, even though they may not be in stone yet, that would be great.
I'm Barbara D. I'm the Executive Director of House of Hope, and we really are just in the initial stages. As Mr. Anderson mentioned, at this time, the brick house is at 222 Walnut has aged. It's nearly 100 years old, and we are concerned about continuing to provide services in there because of the amount of repairs that are needed. So, we are looking to build, we're invested in the Walnut Street neighborhood. The two plots that you're looking at would both be needed, as he said, in order for us to build a 12-plex. Certainly, the transition, because we have eight families living at 222 Walnut, would be an issue. We would need to work with the city. We would be looking at construction as quickly as we could manage with our fundraising efforts to get the women and the families at 222 transitioned over to East Third Street. We did look at the property that you're discussing and the potential of rehabbing. We had some volunteer construction folks go through there. They determined that it, just the cost was prohibitive for us. It's just, there were too many repairs, from roof, electrical, plumbing, everything. I'm not a construction person, but I was told that new construction would, would be safer, better, and certainly more economical for us. We're a small not-for-profit.
Okay. Thanks, Barb.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Barb? I'm sorry.
I've got more questions for Noel, though.
No.
Noel, so Judge Stout was going to basically just take out what he could out of the interior, right, and demolish the rest? I mean, he wasn't going to rebuild the house exactly the way it was somewhere else?
His intention was to rebuild the house as much as possible somewhere else. There was a lot of the exterior materials that were in very rough shape that he believed he would not be able to actually move. He's actually having a little bit more trouble in the interior work as well, as he tries to remove things and get it moved, so he is looking to rescind that. Otherwise, it was slated for demolition by the city.
Mr. Jones, if I could ask one question, please.
Please.
Sorry to interrupt. What's the intent of this action? What does it do?
Essentially, obviously, the House of Hope wants to be able to go to their fundraising community and try to raise funds to do this. They wouldn't want to get a lot of support from people, then come back to the city and have us not support the project. So, we're looking to the Building and Grounds to propel us to that next level of support and say that we do support the project in the moving ahead with their fundraising efforts to develop a development agreement and kind of reserved the lot for them.
Thank you.
Noel, isn't there other property around there that they could look at as well in that area?
That would probably be a question for them. We are asking for three lots from the county and the general Walnut area. I'll let you know how that goes tomorrow.
Are those the garden lots?
Yes, they are. And I don't believe those two alone would be big enough, though.
Who owns the adjoining property?
To the garden lots?
No, the...
To here?
Third Street, that other giant house.
Pat Hayes, it says on here, David.
Pat Hayes owns 515 East Third. I'm not sure who owns the one to the north.
Is that for sale?
I do not know.
Because you need them both, right?
They need ours and Pat Hayes.
Barb D., yeah, I was just, are you...
Barb, come back to the microphone, please. If you don't, nobody can hear you. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, are you looking at other properties in that area, too?
We aren't at this time. That's really an ideal location for us, because the backyard of those two plots is adjacent to our current, one of our current properties at 306 Walnut. So, it would allow us to provide a nice campus and a safe area for the children to play. If we don't secure these, we'll have to look outside the Walnut neighborhood.
So, so the, behind 519 East Third, there's a garden lot, I understand, an empty lot, and then it's, then that's your property? That house, their next house is yours?
There's an empty, there's an empty space behind 306 Walnut that has three owners, undivided shares. Is that what we're talking about, Mr. Anderson? Right. And it's my understanding, we've had some conversation with Pat Hayes, the owner of the other older home. He does want to sell, and he's selling it by owner, to my understanding, right now, and we have started some conversations with him. Our Realtor, Mrs. Ann Lyons, is here as well. So, we're, we're beginning those conversations. We're looking, as Mr. Anderson said, for some commitment for the city that it's appropriate for us to move forward.
So, on, on that corner there, there's 519, and then on Walnut Street, there's a vacant lot, and then the next house is your house? Is the House of Hope house?
Three, the House of Hope is at 306 Walnut. I believe that there's a house between ours and the vacant corner lot. I believe that vacant corner lot is owned by the church. I believe.
I don't remember.
That's a vacant lot developed with some community gardens. It'd be the corner of Third and Walnut.
You mean Second and Walnut?
Second and Walnut.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, Second.
Okay.
No, Third and Walnut. Third and Walnut.
Okay. At, at any rate, there, there is other property around there that you could look at, rather than just settling on 519 and 515 East Third?
The other property that we could consider, to my understanding, would be the one that's going, that's to be auctioned by the county, but that's not large enough for us to do any construction on. Those are, those two parcels on the corner of Clay and Walnut?
Or Almond, yeah.
Correct. Two parcels, but then they're surrounded by two other parcels that are not owned by the county, so it's not large.
Isn't your home on Walnut Street, isn't that an old four-square home, isn't it, that you have fixed up and got looking real nice?
We have.
Right. And then you have the brick, and what would you be doing with the brick structure?
It would be our hope to enter into conversations for that to be sold to the city.
Okay. And that would be ripped down, tore down?
I, I'm not sure what this...
Even though it's 100 years old.
I don't know what the city would have intended for that.
Yes. Our intention would be to tear it down to put with the other CBS land for potential commercial development.
Which we need. Okay. Okay, thanks, Barb.
Barb, as long as you're up there, from a, again, from a timing standpoint, the urgency of this, from your perspective?
We have, the brick house not only is in, in some disrepair, and not, certainly no home of that age improves, but it just doesn't meet our needs. We house 10 single women, homeless women with their children, 10 families, 10 women, up to 30 children. The brick house and its apartments aren't large enough for us. They're all one-bedroom or efficiency apartments. Most of our women have more than one child, so it's very difficult to provide services there. We do feel some urgency, just in terms of not knowing how long the brick house is going to be feasible for us to remain. But again, as I said, it's very tenuous to plan that transition, so that's why knowing in advance helps us as much as possible.
And you've not had, to the best of your knowledge, had any conversation with the Historic Preservation Group?
We have not, as, no, not as, since we don't own those properties, we have not.
Sure, yeah.
Just for general information, I'm sorry to interrupt, but for that CBS lot, where the brick house is, we have had interested parties that have shown interest in that area. That particular building sticking out there onto that lot is a problem for us as far as developing retail space there. We, we, the city, would like to work with House of Hope to get that down.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, speaking on behalf of most council members, we'd all be very supportive of, you know, everything you folks are doing, because you do a marvelous job down there. I go to meetings at Walnut every month and hear great things about it. But I also share Councilman Morsy's concern that, you know, Waterloo just has a history of not retaining the few historical properties we've got left. And, and I'm not saying that these would qualify for that. It may be it's more than what, you know, would make sense, but I guess what I'd really like to see is to make sure there is a conversation that takes place between your group and the Historic Preservation Group, and hopefully the city being involved in that. And because I know there are other vacant lots in that neighborhood, I know there are other buildings in that neighborhood that may not have the same historical perspective that these two do. There's some homes over there, houses over there, that cause some of the neighbors' problems that I don't hear about the two on East Third, so it just seems like there may be some other options. I'd just like to make sure we have a full conversation, and then we can make that decision.
Okay.
So, what are you suggesting? Are you deferring it this?
I'd, I'd like to have it deferred for two weeks, if that's a reasonable timeframe, and then, I know Council Morsy and I...
I'd like to have it deferred for about five years.
Okay, well...
Well, that's a little long.
Would you go for two weeks?
No, I won't be here in five years.
To have, to have, you never know. To have a conversation with the historic committee.
Once it's gone, it's gone, right?
I mean, is, is two weeks adequate, or 30 days?
Let's be reasonable and respectful.
I, I would like to see...
To your question.
I'd like to see it be at least a month. I mean, two weeks might be hurrying it along. Give it a 30 days.
Just 30 days, except for... Okay. I guess I'd like to do that, then. Do you need that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to table this for whatever the next meeting is, in four weeks?
30 days.
Four weeks would be...
28 days.
November...
Have a calendar on your cellphone.
Just table for four weeks.
November 3rd?
November 3rd.
November 3rd.
Second.
And then you and I will coordinate a meeting with Historic Preservation Commission.
Sure.
Motion in proper second to table this item for 30 days to November 3rd. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. That is table for 30 days to November 3rd.
Motion two adjourned.
Second. On favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morsy?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here. Motion approved, the agenda.
Second. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries and passes. This work session is to further inform us and educate us about the request to expand the Martin Road Tiff increment district. Noel, which forward is...
Painting up the current Tiff district, which is showing the opaque color, I think it's orange, and then the proposed expansion area is showing the yellow stripe, translucent color. What we're asked to do is kind of look at and go through what the Martin Road Tiff district was put in place for, what it's doing, and what we're proposing. This larger map I have in front of me shows the original area, which basically spanned from 63 to Ridgeway, and then followed the green belt around, with the north part being on Martin Road, which is why it was called the Martin Road Tiff District. Originally, this was done in 1996. The Tiff District was established to allow the city of Waterloo to pave Martin Road from Highway 63 down to Ridgeway Avenue to try and help O'Neill Steel and Far Beverage continue to operate and expand at their current sites. Far Beverage was built in 1981 at 48,000 square feet. Since that time, they put on additions of 16,000 square feet in 1998. That was a direct result of the Martin Road paving project, 11,000 square feet in 2002, and 12,000 square feet in 2007. Far Beverage is currently assessed at 4.1 million in value, paying over 162,000 in taxes per year. O'Neill Steel, built in 1990 at 91,000 square feet with an addition in 1994 of 5,000 square feet. They're currently valued at about 2.5 million, paying over 98,000 per year in taxes. The cost for paving the Martin Road Tiff District was $186,000. That last bond payment on this road project was just paid in fiscal year 2013. Does anyone have any questions so far on why we did the Tiff District there? I mean, again, it was to capture the taxes from the Far Beverage expansion out there to pay for the road. In 2004, Denso International chose this site over sites in Cedar Falls due to the proximity to the Deer PEC, and due to the city of Waterloo tax incentives being comparable to those offered in Cedar Falls, which was free land and tax rebates. Denso had been located in Cedar Falls for years and was looking to expand for the third time in about six years. The city of Waterloo bought the land from Harold Brock, which is basically the land that was on the west side of Martin Road here, within the existing Tiff District, to provide land to Denso to locate to Waterloo. The land cost was $329,650 for 26 acres of land, or a little under 13,000 per acre. There are also costs to get infrastructure to the site for the city to compete with the developed lot in Cedar Falls, so the total city debt for the project was 435,000. The Denso building's approximately 37,000 square feet and over 1.3 million in taxable value, paying over 52,000 per year in taxes. At this point, before 2004, over 16 Waterloo businesses had relocated from Waterloo to Cedar Falls Industrial Park to get free land and tax incentives for their smaller business developments. As you may be aware, as the city of Waterloo and Cedar Falls layout, this area is primarily located right in the center of the two areas. Note at this point also, private commercial lots recreated along Marni Avenue. Again, you can see these here. All these lots were platted. Large lots and small lots, they were created in 1999. Absolutely none of them were developed for any industrial development. The only things that were there were the hotel and restaurant, which is the Highway 63 diner, and the, and the hotel just to the south of it. They were both built in 1989 to take advantage of the Greyhound dog track racing facility. The entire area is located within close proximity to free lots in the Cedar Falls Industrial Park, which is just 2.2 miles west on Ridgeway Avenue. It's difficult to get lots sold by private developers when Cedar Falls gives lots in the same general vicinity of the metro area for a dollar. In 2004, working with Rick Young, the Tiff District is expanded. So, you can see the original green area. In 2004, the yellow area was expanded into that. What we tried to do is take into account where the existing industrial lots were, where there was large vacant land that was zoned industrial, and of course, this entire area was zoned industrial, planned industrial as well. Miraculously, the city is able to keep Waterloo businesses from relocating to Cedar Falls after this is expanded. In 2005, Wilbert Varial Vault, located there, did an expansion and relocation, instead of going to Cedar Falls, of 24,000 square feet, valued at 770,000, and paying over 29,000 per year in taxes. In 2005, Rainsaw relocated and expanded from the O-line area. I actually met him at the Strictly Business Expo that year. He specifically came to that to talk to Cedar Falls about locating there, since I was there with the booth, and we had these lots in the same general vicinity, which was the middle of the metro area that he wanted, he located in Waterloo. That's valued at 404,000 and pays over 14,000 in taxes per year. In 2007, Riley's Floors relocated and expanded from downtown for the Expo Plaza development of 8,652 square feet, valued at 470,000, and paying over 17,000 per year in taxes. The Country Estates Building, similar, expanded from downtown, valued at 450,000, paying over 16,700 in taxes per year. The United States Postal Service also invested in this area versus other sites in other communities that they were looking at, again, due to its central location in the metro area. In 2011, Failer Hurley Construction had grown to where they wanted to have their own site. They built a 2,400-square-foot building, valued at 260,000, and paying over 9,000 per year in taxes. Recently, in 2013, Disdervik Construction is the first lot on the east side of Marni with a 5,200-square-foot building, and valued at 186,000, paying over 6,000 per year in taxes, and this is a partial value, so that would probably go up to about 300,000. Going back to 2004, when the expansion was done, the land around Greyhound Park, again, you have the dog, Greyhound dog racing track facility here and all this vacant land. Of course, for those of you that were here, this was going to be a great boon to the area. People could not wait. While the land was languishing for years after the demise of the dog racing went under, it was owned by the Ralph Russell Trust in California, with over 100 acres from, at a highway-to-highway interchange. It is an excellent infill development site, highly divisible and, highly visible and desirable site for businesses. In speaking with the trust, they had acquired the site with visions of restaurants and hotels swinging in their heads. Of course, with the Greyhound dog track racing facility going under, the site continues to sit vacant, paying only agricultural tax values. Harold Youngblood approached the city and had divisions, had visions for development of the land. He asked for help. The Tiff District could help compete for development with other communities for Waterloo businesses. In 2004, the city council rescinded a 1980 agreement. The agreement was that the city of Waterloo would fund and construct Greyhound Drive from 63 to Ridgeway, and get repaid through, paid back to the city on a proportionate basis for the development. With the failure of the Greyhound Park, the land was never developed. The agreement was rescinded with the Ralph Russell Trust, and Cattle Congress was a two-parties, a part of the agreement. The bonds at that point that were used to build the road had already been paid back. The city entered into an agreement with Mr. Youngblood to help bring infrastructure to the site with repayment for the future proceeds of the Tiff development. Sewer had to come from the south, water from the north. Roads had to be built to accommodate, new lots had to be plotted and created. This type of partnership with private investors like Mr. Youngblood, or like what we did on the other side to help Mr. Young for his previous investment to get his lots developed, helps the city to continue to prioritize bond funds for other city projects, while developing new business park locations for new businesses in Waterloo. The results, Mall Eye Clinic relocated and expanded into the area at this location. They had actually run out of room at their previous Kimball Avenue site. Mayor Hurley had been invited to a new ribbon-cutting. It was for them to go build a site in Cedar Falls. They even bought land there in the Pinnacle Prairie Medical Park area. Mr. Youngblood actually gave them free land to kickstart his development in this area. The city of Waterloo gave them some tax rebates. Mall Eye Clinic is a 25,650-square-foot building valued at 3.6 million, paying over 140,000 in taxes per year. We've also worked to bring some other things based on the success of that. The Social Security Office, under new regulations for finding locations located in this area after looking at several sites outside of Waterloo due to its central location. The building is built by a private developer, so it does pay taxes. It's a 12,690-square-foot office building valued at 1.3 million and paying over 51,000 in taxes per year. The Financial Decisions Group and Turnkey Architects joined together to build a joint office building, again, in this area, because they saw the growing businesses there. The total building is 15,182 square feet, valued at 1.41 million, paying over 53,400 in taxes per year. One other thing to note on Turnkey Architects is that is actually a business that started in the Regional Business Center in downtown Waterloo and grew to where it wanted its own site, and so this is a really good success story, that they stayed in Waterloo as well. Also, in 2012, Dr. Sundham chose to open a second office at the site, again, due to its centralized location and to serve more growing clientele and different services. That's a 4,641-square-foot office valued at 952,000, paying over 25,000 per year in taxes. So, what would we do without the Tiff District here? Without the Tiff District, none of the area around Greyhound Park would be developed. The trust would probably still own it. It would be paying agricultural taxes. I believe Rick Young's lots would still be vacant. Again, the lots were platted in 1999. None of them were even filled until we expanded the Tiff District in 2004. This area has over 16.4 million in taxable value today. Staff would estimate over 300 employees working in the area. After tax rebates, the total debt is 3.5 million. The total being paid into the Tiff District is 565,000 annually, and the total debt payments are and the total debt payments are five hundred and forty-eight thousand annually. Again, the values are captured into the Tiff, but it's not like it's money sitting there that we don't have anything to do with. We're paying back infrastructure for water, for sewer, for roads, for land acquisitions to make these projects work. Again, we're making developable land to compete with other communities. Without the Tiff District, the city would have had to try and bond for the improvements and would not have worked on other valuable public projects in this capital improvements program, or we would not have worked with others to develop it at all. That's how we sit today. In front of you, you had the proposed expansion area. As the planning director, I'll tell you, the city always works to plan ahead. The last expansion area tried to include what we categorize as available industrial and commercial land in close proximity. Expansions must have legal descriptions to accompany them. We cannot split parcels in such descriptions by state code. As such, we did not attempt to legally describe the area around Highway twenty as it's difficult to follow the lot lines across the highway system, and we did not anticipate portions of the golf hitting range for development. Potentially oversights in the last expansion based on development whispers, obviously, that we're hearing now. Currently, there is a planned one point eight million dollar retail development on the golf range site. It currently sits just outside of the Tiff District. So again, that is the site here. As you're looking at it, it's right here on the map in the upper right-hand corner. We picked up the other vacant land in that area, but did not go this far. The developers say the project will not move ahead with the Tiff District, without the Tiff District tax rebates, which would be five years at fifty percent. Thus, even from day one of paying taxes, the city would gain forty-six thousand, one hundred in new taxes for the Tiff District. Note, from a land use perspective, the golf range has served as a nice buffer in this area for land use purposes as you have single-family homes up here and you have industrially-zoned land in this area. Separating the residential from the north and the industrial to the south and west, this new retail center would work to grow that symbiotic land use relationship with the golf center expansion as they would still utilize the golf range area and that area for the business to locate there utilizing the range in par three course. There's a new building constructed by A-Line Striping. You know, the map that was handed out, here is Shawless Road and the south boundary. A-Line Striping just built a new building on the parcel, basically the third one from the south going up. This is a planned industrial area where they had planned to build three buildings down there. One was built. The second building was planned to go in to have A-Line Striping's office in it, just near Pella Windows. Again, this is building two of a three-building phase development. Due to changing fire code provisions, a water line was deemed necessary for fire safety purposes for the second building to be built of a previously approved three-phase development plan. The city partnered with the Waterloo Waterworks for the infrastructure expansion of over a hundred and fifty thousand. With the new A-Line building, if expanded into the Tiff District as a proposed, that will repay those funds itself in about fifteen years. Without the Tiff District, the bond funds used for the infrastructure would need to be repaid through the standard debt service levy by all citizens. The expansion from the current boundary north of Highway twenty to the Shawless Road area was configured to utilize existing parcel lines and include commercial and industrial lots. So as you look at that new map, going south on twenty, basically what we tried to include in there was all the land that we thought was possible for commercial and industrial development. Majority of that is currently zoned, either commercial or industrial, or next to commercial and industrial land. You may notice that there's a big chunk missing here along Highway sixty-three. We'd like to take advantage of that being a highway road. Those landowners did not sign off since they're over ten acres in size and are currently agricultural. We cannot add them into the Tiff. The owners of Southland Park also have, as a note, down here near Shawless, Southland Park is a residential development back in here. The lots that they have up along Highway sixty-three are actually shown as commercial lots in part of the planned residence district, but they've been unable to compete for new projects along there with other areas in Tiff Districts. The area south would further include Schuetz Engineering, again, at the northeast corner of Shawless and Highway sixty-three there, which has room to expand. There's land owned by TCI up by, near Highway twenty, and a major, which is a major commercial business in the area, as well as mid-country machinery, Kroll, et cetera, as some existing businesses on there. Obviously, a key component of any community's economic development plan is to utilize existing infrastructure and to help its existing business base. With Highway sixty-three as a major traffic corridor for industrial and commercial development, a good core base of businesses in this area, it would appear to be a good candidate to continue to offer options for the city to help businesses in the area. But what does the Tiff do? And some people have said we have too much. Currently, the city has twenty-seven point zero four percent of the city within a Tiff District, which we have eight total Tiff Districts. With the proposed expansion, that number would go to twenty-eight point one zero percent. The Tiff gives the city options. The city has the ability to release funds from the Tiff Districts if it has enough funds to repay debts outstanding in the Tiff Districts. We have a small group of citizens that are continually against Tiff because they believe it does not help contribute to taxes owed for city operations. From the information on the water line above, you can see that there is more of a burden for taxpayers without the benefits of Tiff Districts where infrastructure improvements are needed to continue to develop land. Again, with the ability to release funds, I always believe it is in the city's best interest to give ourselves the options. Is the Martin Road Tiff District working? Without it, we would definitely not have Denso, Wilbert, Rainsoft, Country Estates, Faylor Hurley, Maur, Social Security Office, or Dr. Sundham's office. Their alternative sites were all outside of Waterloo. That represents sixteen point four million in taxable value. That represents over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in permits that were paid. No permit fees are paid into the general fund to help ease any tax levy raises. A pretty good amount of funds for programs that do not help the general fund. Staff would state that the Martin Road Tiff District has worked to create new taxable value, new jobs, new permit fees, new traffic, new population, and a new entryway into the Waterloo community with more to come. We would continue to support the expansion of the Martin Road Tiff District to include the golf range land as we believe some retail development is needed in this area of the community to serve the Waterloo citizenry. Right now, we're hearing that a lot of people that live over in this area of the community will head west for their retail needs instead of heading east into the main portion of We also continue to support the expansion of the district southerly along Highway sixty-three, containing industrial and commercial vacant land and existing businesses to continue to foster that development land, help those existing businesses, and help the City of Waterloo recoup water infrastructure costs through the Tiff District tax generation instead of having to pay it back through debt service levy paid from general taxes. Again, options. The Tiff District gives the city council options. When there's revenue above the debt costs, it gives the city council options to release funds. Without the Tiff District, the city would have to bond and have to pay back the general property taxes and not have the options that the Tiff District gives. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Noel. What a good report.
Thank you. Thanks, amazing what you can do when you put your mind to it. That's great.
Counsel, time for questions. Mr. Morrison?
No, just a couple moments ago, you said something about that people in the residential areas were going to be more likely going to Cedar Falls to do their retail shopping?
Currently, obviously Cedar Falls is located along Ridgeway Avenue, just to the west here. They have a growing commercial area right along Viking Road there. We're hearing from a lot of Waterloo citizenry that obviously they want to avoid the traffic going east or northeast into Waterloo, and they can go easily back over into Cedar Falls. We'd like to give them some retail options for some smaller retail services in this area of the community. Again, with its central location there, we also believe that could help to attract some people from south and southeast Cedar Falls into Waterloo.
So one of the purposes of this expansion was to get retail shops in there?
With the proposed project, so we have the one point eight million dollar proposed retail center that would be going right here. Right now, the plans for that would include the expansion of the golf center and then some restaurant and some other retail spaces on that. It's a multi-tenant building. That's a pending project that they're saying will not move ahead without the Tiff District. And again, one point eight million dollars would be nice to have in permit fees and new taxable value in the City of Waterloo.
And on this map here, I take it that the blue outlines are residential areas?
Yes, the blue outlines are residential lots.
And there is some talk or consideration or planning involved with having retail spaces, not just up here where the Ridgeway Golf is, but down in this expanded area?
The expanded area south of twenty, obviously, right along, right at the interchange of Highway twenty and Highway sixty-three, a lot of interchanges, you'll see gas stations or some other kind of smaller associated restaurants or retails like that. As you get further along sixty-three to the south, we'd expect it mostly to be more industrial and commercial because you're not giving that high visibility location that you are at the interchange. Plus, the traffic drops off dramatically south of Highway twenty as you're leaving Waterloo to head into Hudson.
So what are you hoping will be the attraction by expanding this area to keep the Waterloo residents, citizenry, staying here and shopping in Waterloo?
Obviously, we'd hope that would be up at the interchange area, but we'd also hope to attract some industrial, commercial-type businesses or expansions by mid-country machinery or Kroll or A-Line Striping building their third building down along the south part. So we really think that we can get some more commercial, industrial-type businesses down there, which brings more employees to this area, which can go up and shop at the retail locations. More employees can bring more housing, bring more population to Waterloo. You know, we have a large amount of our federal funds for road dollars. They're all based on population, so as our population goes up, that also helps bring various funding sources such as CDBG, federal road dollars, et cetera, into Waterloo.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ray?
Noel, what is percentage of use in the existing Tiff? How full is it? How, hundred percent, fifty percent, ten percent? How many lots are available in the existing Tiff before you expand?
The area right around here from sixty-three west, I know that's about a hundred acres total when we first worked to expand that in there. I don't know how you want to count the Greyhound Park. I'll count that as vacant. That's about a forty-acre site in itself. Otherwise, you can count it as a brownfield if you'd like. So we have a good amount of lots available in there. One of the differences is you're going to look at the different uses for land use that we have out there based on the existing business base. So Maur, we have all professional offices up here. Obviously, we'd like to try to continue to grow that professional office medical park up in here where you have some of that existence. We obviously are trying to work with War and Transport, work through the cattle congress problems for the Greyhound Park site. That does a number of different things. It eliminates blight, eliminates a terrible, terrible thing for people to see as their first view of Waterloo, and it also brings a lot of new employees, a lot of new investment from the Anderson Company doing businesses, War and Transport in this area to the area. Otherwise, you're looking at, there's probably a mix of where you get into some more industrial land. We are down to about thirty acres in here. There's about six acres in here, but we'll have to probably build a cul-de-sac for some smaller lot development in there. So I'd say in terms of industrial land, we're probably down, probably down below fifty acres in this area. And again, the majority of the area south of twenty, we would see as industrial-type businesses.
Do we worry that we're getting too much inventory, that we're just stealing from each other, from other Tiffs? I mean, we have too many lots rather than...
You mean, throughout the city? I don't think so. You know, in working with businesses, one thing, you know, when we first started, I think tipping, you know, the City of Cedar Falls, I believe, started their Tiff District a number of years before Waterloo had one and was giving out the free lots. By the time the City of Waterloo started, when our first one was the Northeast Industrial Park, and you get businesses that want to be in a certain location within the metro area, and so we always like to have different options open for them based on their different needs. I'll go back to the Denso one. You know, Denso specifically had been located in the Cedar Falls Industrial Park. They would not consider the Northeast Industrial Park. They would not consider the airport area. They wouldn't probably consider anywhere else except here because they wanted their proximity to the PEC building. So it was important for us to have those options, to have those choices. You'll also find out, working with businesses too, that some of them don't want certain uses next to them. We just worked with a large state lead that we were, that we're still in the running for. They wanted to have a site that was at least twelve hundred feet from any residential, including farmhouses, so it's difficult to have one area and try to meet all types of needs. So that's where it's an advantage to us to have the eight Tiff Districts, some of them for heavy industrial, some of them for light industrial, some of them for a mix of offices, heavy and light industrial, and retail. So I think we're, I think we're giving ourselves more options again.
Is there an unused increment that can be released from that Tiff now?
It's a very small amount from what we had looked at. And again, one of the things, I think we were at five sixty-five is what we had and we were paying in five forty-eight. And of course, Michelle can probably get into more details as she wants, but we're working with, there's a little bit of give and take every year because if, if O'Neill Steel comes in and fights their assessed value and it's lower, and all of a sudden, the amount of income we have goes down, so we have to make sure we have a little bit of cushion in there to make sure we have enough to pay the debt.
In a few years, will we have a substantial unused increment?
We obviously hope so. You know, as we continue to build out the area and have all the infrastructure in place and no longer have any new projects to try and bring projects here and then are just filling the lots, then obviously we'll have more ability to get that.
Because as you know, that's always the argument, that police and fire don't get funded in Tiffs.
We obviously hope that, you know, the added construction value that we have with the ability to draw businesses here, the permit values and all that will help replace some of that, but...
One thing I do like about your plan...
Oh, sure. One of the things Michelle brought up is this is a Eckhart Development Tiff District, so it has a twenty-year sunset on it. So when the debt is first certified against the district, it has twenty years, and that part will have to be released.
But every expansion gets another twenty years.
The expansion areas would, but the existing areas will not. So the nineteen ninety-six area should be up at the end of twenty sixteen. So that would be released...
It'll be a couple more years.
Oh, because the debt could be a little bit behind, but...
But that's approaching the end of its life, that first piece, so it will be released in a few years.
But what I was going to say is what I like about your plan with that thing by that little golf course, those are local people. We always seem to attract outside investors, you know. This is going to get a local business spending a couple million dollars on a facility. I like that.
Obviously, that's one of our goals, is to draw in new businesses and help our existing developers and businesses. Most Eckhart Development professionals will tell you, you get about seventy percent of your growth every year from existing businesses or existing clientele, so obviously we want to work with both parties.
Is it hard to expand a Tiff? I mean, do you have to go jump through a bunch of hoops? I mean, could you...
Yes, it is. By city planners out there smiling. So we have to write up a legal description to try and, again, go through and get all those parcels without splitting them. Then we have a number of steps we go through to have meetings with the other taxing entities, and we have a certain amount of days to wait in case they have any comment periods before we go to the next step, before we go to council and all that. So it's a pretty prolonged process, and all parties are notified.
But I guess what I'm trying to ask is if we wanted to maybe not expand as greatly as we are here? Could we do that easily, or is that a giant...
I've spoken with the attorneys about if we could just expand the smaller area instead of doing the larger one that we proposed. There's some wording in the state code that notes that there's a substantial change at any point through the process. You basically have to start over. So at this point, if we changed, substantially changed in which, granted, we showed this large expansion, and if you just did a smaller one, is that a substantial change because it's a lot smaller? The attorneys have ruled, yes, it is, so we'd have to go back and start. So again, we go back to about a month and a half to two-month process, so it would definitely push any construction on that site back to next spring at the earliest.
Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Jones?
So Noel, on that golf course property, you said that they weren't interested in developing that unless it was in a Tiff, correct?
That is correct.
And why is that? Because our, I mean...
Based on making the numbers work, they believe that the Tiff District will allow them to fill it with some tenants that they have spoken with. Otherwise, they're just going on spec space, in which case they may not be ready to move ahead with it as a dark space.
Is that because of the tax incentives?
Correct.
But those...
There'd be five years and fifty percent is what would be proposed for a standard project in this Tiff District.
But you can do that without having a Tiff District? Can't you get incentives?
No, we cannot.
Are you thinking of cure?
The tax rebate.
That's not an acute district.
Prebates without that?
No. We can, not unless it's industrial.
You can, but you can rebate the city piece of the taxes.
Oh, that's right, the state. Michelle checked with the state. There is, if it's outside of a Tiff District, you could do it for the city's forty-two percent portion of it, but not the full taxes like normal.
I'm trying to do like thirty-three percent.
Because you can't do the debt service, so it'd be about thirty-two percent.
Okay.
We have typically not done that. We've done development agreements outside of Tiffs strictly for sale of property, but not for any kind of a rebate program.
Okay. I also have some concerns about some of the area east of 63 and some of the zoning that currently is there of commercial and industrial right up against brand-new residential construction.
At the end of Williams.
In the Williams Drive, right.
I would agree. At one point, we had a plan we thought was perfect, and they just didn't move ahead with it. They were going to plant a nursery there and then have some commercial businesses along 63, but the plan fell through for that company. We thought that would be the nice buffer area, so there would definitely be some work in there. Obviously, if a portion of that were to become residential through continued development or planning of that site, the city council has not given any residential development in this TIF district, any kind of rebates or program or anything like that. So you wouldn't have to. Again, it'd be by development agreement for any project. A lot of that is also in the floodplain areas, so there's a lot of planning to move ahead with on that port, that parcel that you're talking about. And it's currently owned by a gentleman in California.
Okay.
It's a trust, actually, but it's not the Russell, Ralph Russell.
So I'm not...
I would agree, though, from a land use decision standpoint, we have a lot of work to do where that buffer will occur between the highway and the residential.
So moving forward with this TIF, this expanded TIF, does that, that doesn't preclude that buffer from occurring, does it?
It does not. You know, if, if we just assumed that that area would develop similar to this, I mean, if you, if you looked at this as vacant land, and it would be the big triangle similar to that one there, you know, when you built a road along here and had some industrial lots on both sides, and then maybe had some landscaping, you can see all that down here for the residential. So even if that were to occur exactly as that one occurred, that can all happen even with the TIF district in place.
Okay. And how, how much have we released from TIFs over the history of having them in Waterloo?
That all, Michelle answers.
I didn't bring that up. Michelle Wiener, Chief Financial Officer, and I, I know I developed something for the Northeast site, it's the only one we've officially released value for, and I just don't recall the numbers. It was a much higher figure than you might guess. There, there is another one, the Logan area, we amended and added to, but we haven't even started certifying anything in that, in one amended area because we haven't needed to yet. So there is actually, technically, you could say we released value there as well. And I, I can get you that number again for the Northeast site, but it's, it was millions of dollars of tax revenue that we have released since about 2006 for the Northeast site. And the other thing with an economic development TIF that you have to remember, we only get 20 years. So if you have any vacant lots in that area, I think we want to think really hard about whether we release it to the, to all the taxes, because when you get a project, you're still going to need to put that infrastructure in. So you want to be careful not to release things too early, I guess, I would say.
Well, don't you also have to be careful not to put something in a TIF too early? Because you can't re-TIF it once it expires.
Now, that is, that is becoming a new theory, yes. Yeah, but that is one of the things that we learned at the lead conference last week.
Yes, we did.
Yep.
David, explain that, what you just said.
So if you put something in a TIF now, right, too far ahead, and, and it doesn't develop within the 20 years, you can't re-TIF it ever again. It can't go into a TIF. So if you're getting too far ahead of yourself, putting too much land in a TIF, that could have negative effects as well.
You would have to, they're suggesting that you might want to pull an area out and then maybe develop a new area that that piece would be included in so that you continue to be able to develop it. It's quite complicated after a while.
Eric Trader, City Planner, and Michelle or Noel can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I'm pretty sure you can re-TIF it. It's just any base. So like, if you TIF an area and you haven't done much development in that 20-year period and it expires, you can re-TIF it. The new base goes up, though. So let's say you increase the taxable value by $5 million within that area, then you start a new TIF district, and that new base would be set. That $5 million is going into, you know, the, the general, and then the new base above, you know, the new increase above that new base is what you could start increment on, so.
Yes, I don't want to cut off good conversation, but we do have two more meetings that we're going to have to squeeze in here before 5:30. So does anybody have any more burning questions right now?
Mr. Mayor, I have other questions, but I guess I can...
Okay. Mr. Morrissey, if we, yeah, if you can talk to Noel, and again, I'm sorry for, this is, this is good conversation, but if you have questions, the expansion will be on next week's agenda, is that correct, Noel? For a vote. So please, if you have questions or concerns, make sure that you talk to Noel and get them answered before that.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned from that meeting.
Here.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion, a second on the agenda, these questions, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, that motion, great. Would someone take the first three? I think we speed things up here.
Move that we approve a request from Director of Safety Services, and number one, for the authorization to promote two police lieutenants from the current civil service list, also from the Director of Safety Services for the authorization to promote two police sergeants from the civil service list. Number three, a motion from the Director of Safety Services to appoint two police officers from the current civil service list. I move that those are approved.
Second. We have a motion, a second on the first three requests. Is there any questions you'd like to ask Chief Trelka? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. Need a roll call on that, too?
If, if I could, just real quick. I guess I've got a question more for the mayor. Mayor, can I ask where we're at with Metro Coalition or collaboration discussion with Cedar Falls?
You know what, Mr. Schmidt, we have not done anything with that since the spring or the early summer when I sent you that email that we were putting it off till the fall. I have not done anything with it. So I, I, we expected to do something with that this fall or early winter, and I said I would, and I will. I have not moved forward on it yet.
Okay, my concern, because part of that whole goal is, should we get to that point, is being able to realize some savings through, you know, sharing of positions, and that's, I'm a little bit concerned about supporting this. And I understand these, these positions need to be filled, but I'm a little bit concerned about filling them, and then we, this collaboration discussion leads to something, then we're going to have to lay some people off.
I would suggest that collaboration is going to be a long process, if it occurs at all, and it's not going to happen anytime in the near future, Mr. Schmidt, but that's your choice to make, your council's choice to make. In, in repeated conversations with Mayor Cruz, police have been off the table. There, there's no interest from Cedar Falls side to collaborate in the police department. We haven't even had the discussion. So that's a little indication there. There might, and I'm heavy, heavy, heavy on the might, might be some opportunity to do some fire work in the future, but actually, there was hesitation from our side on the firework. But I, I think we're a long ways from any agreement where we do that. But there again, it's yet to be seen.
Do you have any idea what the reservation is on the Cedar Falls side as far as the police goes?
No, I don't.
Any other questions from anyone? Hearing none, we need a roll call, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Okay, those three motions passed. Would somebody take number four by itself?
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
I move that we approve the request from Culture and Arts Director for authorization to begin the civil service process for youth pavilion manager and make an appointment.
Second. We have a motion, a second on that request. Kent is here, if anybody would like to ask a question in regards to this request. Hearing none, we have a motion in a second. Need a roll call, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
That motion passes. Now we can take five and six together.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes.
There's a request from the Chief of Fire Services for authorization to promote three fire lieutenants from the current civil service list, and also to appoint five, authorization to appoint five fire recruits from the current civil service list. That's number six.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on those two requests. Chief Taylor is here, if you have any questions in regards to these requests. Mr. Schmidt?
My understanding on number six is those fire appointments are budgeted, and that those have been approved from a budgeting standpoint, and the need is, and Pat can talk to the need, is apparently great compared to, oh, with all the number of people that are out. If you wanted to talk to that a little bit?
Sure. Pat Trulaw, Chief Fire Services. Currently, we've had two members leave, so we're down to one retirement and one unexpected resignation. We've got four long-term injuries, two short-term, so that leaves us eight down currently, and we have three more retirements occurring before the end of, or excuse me, before November 7th. So we are running extremely short right now, and we do have a current list. We plan on interviewing, doing chief's interviews the 13th of October, and we hope to have at least three paramedics out of those five that we hire if, if approved.
Any other questions?
Pat, I think the mayor mentioned that Waterloo Fire had a hesitation resistance, I'm not sure what the term was, for the discussion with Cedar Falls. Can you speak to that at all?
The hesitation, at least from my perspective, not speaking for the mayor or Director Trelka, was that we wanted to enter into an agreement that was mutually beneficial. And what was proposed to us, in my opinion, was not benefiting the city of Waterloo or Waterloo Fire Rescue.
How long ago was that conversation?
Oh, I'd say maybe a year ago.
Okay, so nothing current?
Oh, there hasn't been anything recently, no.
How's the, how things been working with the reduction from the, this summer, from the 1st of July?
With the reduction in three personnel? Well, you know, it, without having so many long-term injuries, it, it might have been a little better. We've closed Station 6 20 times since the beginning of July to current date today. The station is closed today again. So has it worked out well? I don't know, it's not in my opinion, but we, we've been hit with, with the injury bug bad, and we've got guys that have been there 30 years and they've never seen it this bad. That four long-term injuries, we had five, and I'm talking three, four months type of injuries.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Pat, the, these, the injuries are, if we don't hire these positions, are we out of luck because these injured personnel are not working, they're not going to be working for what, several months?
Correct. Two of the long-term injuries, we hope to have back before the end of October, but we're trying to hire to get to our authorized level so we can keep Station 6 open as much as possible. So right now, we're technically only down two because we had a retiring, a resignation, but the way I look at it is that we're down, excuse me, we're down eight because of the four long-term and the two short-term. We just had another one go down today, so.
So these five, though, the five get you back up to that authorized level?
If we, excuse me, if we hire five, we will get to, we'll get to the 105, correct. And we've run the numbers through Chief Financial Officer, Michelle Wiener, and I think we're good to go.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we need a roll call, please, on five and six.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Second. Those motions pass, and we have a motion for adjournment, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Here.
Pull your microphone. Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda, as proposed, and also the minutes of September 22nd.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can you hear me now?
I can.
And all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. [inaudible].
Madam Chair lady, I'd be delighted to take those travel requests.
Okay.
First, we have Dan Youngblood, Chief Accommodation Inspector, and Tim Moyer, Chief Electrical Inspector, to the Fall IAEA Meeting in Ames, October 9th and 10th, at a cost not to exceed $260. Steve Jordan, Fire Marshal, to the 2014 Fire Prevention Education Conference in Ankeny, October 21st through the 24th, at a cost not to exceed $672.84. Next, we have Craig Danner, Facility Specialist, and Katie Muller, Member Services, to the CEU Workshop in Cedar Falls on January 26, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $270. Next, Investigator Whitmire and Investigator Miller to the Interview Robbery Suspect Training in Lafayette, Indiana, September 16th and 17th. Delayed, delayed, $267.82, not to exceed that amount. Officer Cole, Essential Mobile Forensics in Webinar, Waterloo, August 27th, $149. Angie Reed, Education Coordinator, Art Educators of Iowa Conference in Tama, October 10th, at a cost not to exceed $190. Buck Clark, Mayor, Cedar Valley Coalition Trip, Washington, DC, April 28th through the 30th, cost not to exceed $1,460. And then we have item number eight, Michael Gray, 1834 Huntington Road, requesting a refund for garbage services, the amount of $360 for overcharges on a yard waste container he does not have. And finally, Ronald Wood, 229 Clay Street, requesting a refund for garbage services, the amount of $198.46 for garbage services that were not provided. I move you approve all those items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those items pass.
Madam Chair, my question, may I please take the three authorizations?
Yes, sir.
All right, we've got building maintenance, $3,089.50 for tuck pointing for Center for the Arts. Building maintenance, $7,100 for exterior painting of Veterans Memorial Hall. Building maintenance, $3,100. Perform five-year testing and interval inspection at Waterloo P.D. Garage. Wet fire sprinkler system, install sprinklers under five overhead doors, one mezzanine and one sprinkler under ductwork. Building maintenance, $3,135 for professional fees for five Southern Brothers Convention Center planning. Central garage, $2,024.66 plus $200 shipping and handling for hydraulic cylinder for Leisure services not to exceed $5,700. For flooring for the family locker room hallway and pool hallway. Leisure services, $13,575 for grandstand painting at Riverfront Stadium. Leisure services not to exceed $5,300 for design services for Riverfront Stadium grandstand party decks. Leisure services, $14,191.25 for one Smithco tournament ultra roller. Sanitation, $24,000 for contract brush grinding at yard waste site. Traffic operations, $2,421.25 plus $70 shipping and handling for access point kit for valence P.O.D. system, including sensor pod, sealant cable, and applicator. Traffic operations not to exceed $1,400 for heater cooling unit. Waste management, $4,458 for six-inch Desrick plug valves, three each, replacement valves for digester heat, interchanger number two, and sludge storage tank. Waste management services, $5,488.29 plus $300 shipping and handling for cable. I guess that's assembly for 10,050 feet for TV van 2010. And waste management, $3,764 for replacement of check valves and discharge valves at Highway 63 South Lift Station.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I had a quick question on the $5,700 from leisure services for the flooring for the family locker room. Paul, is that in the sportsplex?
Yes.
Is that not already done, or what's, I don't understand that?
This is a concrete floor. Call it, it was your services, right. Concrete floor in the hallway, well, it's described, it's concrete and we're wanting it to be more of a cleanable and presentable flooring. It'd be almost exactly like what we have in the restrooms at Young Arena. We feel it'll look better and clean up better.
And that's?
And that's the continuation of the money from the, what's the fund? Help me.
Winter State.
Thank you. The Winter says state.
The Winter, yes.
And as long as I'm up here for the record, the painting item there for the stadium, that's, we've already received a check from the new owners of Waterloo Bucks. They're paying that bill.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's my question.
Okay. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I will take the next four items. I move that we approve the project budgets in 11, 12, and 13. Copies are on file in the city clerk's office. And I also move that we approve authorization to dispose of retired equipment. The list is on file in the city clerk's office.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion to adjourn?
I think we better pay the bills first.
Adjourn.
Yeah. I move that we pay the bills, and they are $3,420,896.45, 3,420,896.45.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion to adjourn?
I think we better pay the bills first.
Adjourn.
Yeah. I move that we pay the bills, and they are $3,420,896.45, 3,420,896.45.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Pay the bills.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for your time.
Start the step.
Tough act to follow, Pat. Come on up. Pat Treeler is here and is going to accept a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Pat, whereas the city of Waterloo, Iowa is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Waterloo, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2013, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 369,500 home fires. Wow. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoking alarms. [inaudible]
Words that you'd like to share with us?
I appreciate it.
Just talk, yeah.
You can hear me.
Yeah.
Basically, I just want to thank Mayor Clark and the City Council for recognizing Mental Illness Awareness Week. NAMI is an organization that works in our community. It stands for National Alliance on Mental Illness. And we are housed at Allen Hospital and offer support groups and classes and educational programs and all our work that we do in the community is free. And if anybody wishes to contact us, the number is (235) 5263. And there was an ad for Mental Illness Awareness Week that ran in yesterday's Courier that listed different organizations that work with people in terms of helping them as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do, for the community. Ladies and gentlemen, could you hear the microphone from Miss Cole?
I was wondering, it didn't sound like I could.
Yeah, Greg, can you do something about that with the next one, please? All right, our next proclamation is with Pastor Thomas Flint. And Pastor Flint will be here so that we can recognize and acknowledge the Payne AME Church in co-hosting the 132nd session of the annual conference. Pastor Flint, come on up, please.
Good to see you again. How are you, sir? Good to see you. Good to see you. All right. This is a City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation also. Whereas the African-American Methodist Episcopal Church grew from the Free African Society, which was established in Philadelphia in 1787. And whereas, in protest of slavery, the African Methodist Episcopal Church was the first denomination in the Western world, developed because of sociological rather than theological differences, that God is God all the time and for everybody. And whereas, led by Reverend Richard Allen in 1816, the African Methodist Episcopal Church, the AME, was the first African-American denomination organized and incorporated in the United States. And whereas, the African Methodist Episcopal Church has membership in 20 Episcopal districts in 39 countries on five continents. And whereas Payne AME Church has been a pillar of our community, and it certainly has, and a place to worship freely since 1912. And whereas Payne AME Church is co-hosting with Cedar Rapids Bethel AME Church, the 132nd Chicago Annual Conference of the Fourth Episcopal District of the African Methodist Episcopal Church, October 8th through the 12th of this year. Now therefore, I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby congratulate Payne AME Church on co-hosting the 132nd session of the Chicago Annual Conference of the Fourth Episcopal District of the African Methodist Episcopal Church. Pastor, thank you so much. I'm going to give you the microphone. I want you to say a couple. I'm quite sure you have a couple of things to say.
I'd just like to say on behalf of the clergy, the officers, members of Payne Memorial Church, we thank you very much for this proclamation. And we're just glad that we're able to host it, co-host it with Bethel.
Very good. Thank you, Pastor. Very good. Thank you for listening. All right. Mindy Fisher. Mindy, are you here? Oh, come up, Mindy. We are going to, I don't know, celebrate as well. Yeah, all of you guys, come on up. Please do. We're going to have a proclamation announcing Anti-Bullying Month this month, so, good to see you. How are you guys? Good to see you, all of you guys.
These are a couple of our students.
Good, good. Well, I'll let you introduce them here in just a minute. How about if we do that? Okay, but first, we're going to read a proclamation from the City of Waterloo, Iowa. Whereas, school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States, where almost 30% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim. And whereas, an estimated 160,000 students in kindergarten through 12th grade miss school every day due to a fear of being bullied. And whereas, bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently in cyberspace, and can happen in many places, on and off the school grounds. And whereas, it is important for administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community. And whereas, the Waterloo community and Cedar Falls School Districts and the cities of Waterloo, Cedar Falls, and Evansdale are united in their desire to educate and encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors. Now therefore, the cities of Evansdale, Cedar Falls, Waterloo, the Waterloo community and the Cedar Falls School Districts proclaim their unified commitment to the education and prevention of bullying within our communities and schools, exploring solutions to the problem, including cyberbullying legislation and offering support in raising awareness and recognizing the month of October 2014 as National Anti-Bullying Month. Mindy, that's for you. And let me give you the microphone. And you can introduce these fine young gentlemen and tell us more about the program.
Okay, so, my name is Mindy Fisher with Waterloo Schools. And we really wanted to not just preach about anti-bullying, have the mayor declare it Anti-Bullying Month, but we wanted to do something. So, we started the League of Caring Students. And I brought with me two students up here, and then Zoe's over there on the camera for me. This is Cassidy Lloyd. He is a ninth grader at West High. And Nick Hines is an eighth grader at Central. He aged up on me, I'm sorry. And then over there is Zoe Anderson, and she's a freshman at East. And all of our kids on this group are from all of our secondary schools. So, we have everybody coming together as a school district, not just, which is part of our declaration too, is it's not just the City of Waterloo, but it's Evansdale and Cedar Falls. So, as soon as we're done here, we're going to run away to the other council meetings tonight and do similar things. Cassidy wanted to talk to you guys about what we're doing in the school. One event that he doesn't have on there actually goes with the mental health and mental awareness, which I was so happy that they were here tonight, because we're offering a free movie night at East High on Monday, October 20th. It's called Who Cares About Kelsey? It's a girl who's got some mental health issues. She's been abused, and she's, the show starts and it follows her, and she, if you knew her, you would think she was going to drop out. But the school wraps supports around her, and she's a successful 22-year-old now. And so, it's a really great movie. It's free and open to the public, so we invite everybody here and everyone watching. So, here you go, Cassidy.
Okay, as she says, my name's Cassidy.
There you go. Right up next here. Right up there. There you go.
Okay, the day for the Waterloo Schools and, I don't know if Cedar Falls and Evansdale did it, but we had a National Wear Blue Day, when as in dress code, we would wear a blue polo or just put a blue shirt over it. The 20th of this month is National School Bus Safety Week coloring contest for elementary. I don't know much about it, because we never did it. I'm kind of too old for that.
You don't still color, Cassidy?
I just still color. The 21st, we have conferences, so I don't think we're going to do anything that day. The 22nd is National Union, Wear Orange to Show Appreciation. Dress code appropriate, of course, or Building School Spirit Day. The 23rd is National Red Ribbon Week, ends October 31st. That's when it first starts. 24th, we will not have any school due to conferences. And the 28th, Bully Movie Night at Central for the district, 6 o'clock to 8:30. And the 31st is the day that red ribbon begins. So, thank you.
Very good, very good. Cassidy, thank you, guys. Thank you very much, guys. Good luck with your election. Tough act to follow, Pat. Come on up. Pat Treeler is here and is going to accept a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Pat, whereas, the City of Waterloo, Iowa is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Waterloo. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2013, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 369,500 home fires. Wow. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas, three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoking alarms, and when they should have operated but not do so. It was usually because batteries were missing or disconnected, or they were dead. And whereas, residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Waterloo first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education. And whereas, Waterloo residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme, Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives Test Jours Every Month, effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoking alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through the 11th as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all to test their smoke alarms, at least monthly, by pushing the test button. They're loud. And to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Waterloo Fire Rescue during Fire Prevention Week in 2014. Pat, there's that, and there's that, and say a couple of words.
That was certainly, excuse me, that was certainly a long proclamation.
That was a long proclamation. I assumed we'd upright it, though.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I guess a couple of key things to take away from that is that if you have a working smoke detector in your home, you have a 50% better chance of getting out alive. And when the smoke detectors don't work, we've found national statistics, and I brought a little prop with me, this little thing right here can save your life, and it's a nine-bolt battery. And what we've done over the past year, Waterloo Fire Rescue, we've installed over 300 smoke detectors within the community, free of charge, and we've given out over 300 smoke, or, excuse me, over 300 batteries as well. We have about 60 of the smoke detectors left and about 150 of the batteries that were received through a grant through State Fire Marshal's Office. So, I would encourage anybody that's listening at home or that's in the audience, that if they need a smoke detector, to call Station 1 at (319) 291-4460, (291) 4460. And we'd be glad to either come out and help put the smoke detectors in for you, or you can come pick them up. We just get some basic information, and they're the best smoke detector out there. So, thanks, Mayor and Council, for the proclamation.
Thanks, Pat. Thank you so much. Alvin Wright, come on up here. Alvin, where are you? Come on up here. Bring anybody you want to with you, or if you all just want to sit and watch. Come on up here, please. Certainly your mama.
Somebody needs to take the picture.
I'm great, I'm great. Yeah. Well, now, don't be bashful for crying out loud. None of you guys are bashful.
You know I'm not.
Will and May. How are you?
Hi, guys.
How are you? How are you guys? You got your, you got your, yeah, your group posse or something here. You know, ladies and gentlemen, we don't do this often. Probably not often enough, because I know that we have more citizens in this city that do extraordinary things, but, so maybe this is the beginning of something. But we had a situation back, oh, back in the summer, not too awful long ago, where code enforcement went to a house of an elderly lady. The house was in really, really bad disrepair. There was, probably her treasures, so I hesitate to call it junk, but there was a lot of stuff that had accumulated in this yard over years and years and years. The neighborhoods, the neighbors started complaining about it, and it was a real issue, and it was something that we were going to have to address. And of course, we don't necessarily have the wherewithal to go out and clean these places up. What we tend to do is enforce our ordinances, which sometimes just isn't the right thing to do. So, Alvin Wright got involved, along with another group of folks, and they, over a weekend or a couple of weekends, got trucks and vans and stuff, and they went to this lady's house, and they performed nothing short of a small miracle to get this lady's house back in operating order, should I say, Alvin? But you did, you did just a wonderful job, so. But the thing about Alvin, really, and all of his family, Will and May, and just everybody, is this isn't the first time that Alvin has stepped up and committed himself to the community. Alvin has been just a wonderful member of this community for a long time. Some of his accomplishments is that he's been active in the Unity Neighborhood for over a decade. He's a fifth-grade teacher at Kettrell School, and he wears the colors proudly. He's an active member of Payne AME Church, and he is a member of Omega Psi Phi Civic Fraternity. Alvin has been very community-minded, working to improve his neighborhood through neighborhood cleanups, national night out events. He makes a mean hot dog on national night out events, and assisting residents when needed. His efforts have improved the quality of life in his neighborhood, and he has always given freely of his time of talent. So, for this tonight, we are going to give Alvin a certificate of appreciation. It's presented to Alvin Wright by the City of Waterloo, Iowa, on this sixth day of October 2014, in recognition of your valuable and dedicated service as a neighborhood and community volunteer. Alvin, I'm going to give that to you. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Yes, I could.
Okay, well, you don't have to.
There you go.
Thank you. You're welcome. Speak right up there. There you go.
I'd like to thank the mayor, council, and everyone that were involved. Perry Goodman, he was mainly responsible. He's over Neighborhood Services, and he emailed me to see if there's anything I could do, because she lives in the Neighborhood Association that I also live in. And he was saying, is there anything you can do to help her to get herself up to code? Because I guess the international--
Property Maintenance Code.
Property Maintenance Code, yes, so. I said, well, let me see, like, I can't do anything during the week, but maybe the weekend. So, we spent about two or three hours getting her yard and everything cleaned up, so. And I told him, when he called me about it, I said, I don't want the recognition. I don't, that's not why I did it.
Yeah, I understand that. And I know you, and I know that to be true.
Yeah, but, you know, he's, but to call attention to helping your neighbor--
Yep.
That was mainly what I decided to come and accept this.
Okay, Alvin, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, all of you guys. Everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm just going to stay standing for just a minute. I don't see Tricia Wright, but for those of you who regularly attend, you know that every month I recognize somebody as Team Member of the Month. This morning, I recognized Tricia Wright from our Engineering Department who-- Ross, excuse me, in the Engineering Department. And Tricia does a little bit of everything. She's one of those invaluable people that I think technically she's called a clerk or a secretary, but in fact, she probably runs the Engineering Department. She answers the phone, she directs people, she keeps schedules, and she always does it with a smile, and she is just an incredible employee. So, I was very happy this morning to present Tricia Ross with a Team Member of the Month certificate and gift certificate and so forth. So, Tricia's not here, but hopefully you're watching, Tricia. Congratulations and thank you. All right. Mr. Hart.
A move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B19. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, a move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $3,420,896.45, 3,420,896.45.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes, except I have to abstain on 1A, 2, at 8:24 with West 3rd. Yes on everything.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good that motion carries. Item number two, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two, I'd like to make that motion receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and that's for the request of City of Waterloo to vacate a dead-end portion of West 17th Street, north of Blackhawk Street, and west of 18th Street.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number two?
There are no written objections.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against vacating a portion of West 17th Street? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion and to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and receive, file, consider, and pass to the first time, an ordinance vacating a dead-end portion of West 17th Street, north of Blackhawk Street, and west of 18th Street.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, for the purchase of two pickup trucks for the sanitation department.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, did we have any objections to buying a couple of pickup trucks?
No, there are no objections.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against us purchasing two pickup trucks for the sanitation department? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries also.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the award of bid to Witham Ford of Hudson, Iowa. Per vehicle price was $25,555 for a total bid price of $51,110. Second bid was Charles Gabus Ford. Price per vehicle is $26,559. Total bid price, $53,118. The third bid is from Witham Ford of Waterloo, Iowa. Price per vehicle, $25,491. Total bid price, $50,982.
Very good, thank you, Madam Clerk.
In that case, I'll second his motion.
I'm sorry?
In that case, I'll second his motion.
Okay. There's a motion, a second, it's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thanks, Counsel. Let's do resolutions, please, three at a time. How about four, five, and six? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Morsy.
I'd like to adopt, make a motion to adopt a resolution approving construction permit application with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for wastewater disposal system construction for CIP lining Phase 2 for service areas 15 and 16. Number five, a resolution approving award of contract to Protract and Tennis Incorporated of Bennington, Nebraska, in the amount not to exceed $51,620, and approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the 2014 Burns Tennis Complex Resurfacing Project. Unauthorized mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number six, a resolution approving award of bid to Cedar Rapids Truck Center of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount of $226,550 for the purchase of one automated side loader garbage truck.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding those three resolutions, four, five, or six?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
If I could, on item number four, I guess what I'm wondering, we've talked about, and I think 15 and 16 are Alabar Hills, North Hack at that area, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
And I know we've been working on this slip lining for a period of time, but also, it seems like for quite some time, we've been talking about the footing drain issue there, and it seems to me at presentations, we've heard that these are both about equally disruptive or equally damaging or part of the problem. And I guess I'm just wondering, can we get an update on where we're at with that whole footing drain discussion and where that part of the equation's at?
Yeah, Bob Bamsy is here from AECOM, and he can fill in any holes that I leave in my explanation, Mr. Schmidt. But we just had a meeting last week with, or was it the week before last? No, I think it was the week before last now, that with EPA, E O J, the attorneys came in. We had a meeting. We are working closer towards a resolution with those issues. We will, our goal is to have a directive. I'm going to stop short of calling it an ordinance for footing drain removal. We keep whittling away, there's lots of moving parts on that. But we will have some kind of a directive on removing extemporaneous flow out of those two areas by the end of October. I'm very hopeful.[1584.83]
But we will have some kind of a directive on removing extemporaneous flow out of those two areas by the end of October, I'm very hopeful. So, as you said correctly, CIP lining, slip lining, is in the public side. That's our responsibility. Manhole repairs, et cetera, et cetera, is our responsibility. But there's a great deal of responsibility in the private side also, and we are going to have to address those, and I think we are, we're just about there with a directive that's going to do that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Forrest Dilwo, Seventeen Twenty-Five Huntington Road, very familiar with this problem. It was interesting tonight in the Waterloo paper, Cedar Falls quoted they have the same problem. AE, excuse me, AECOM made a report not long ago that if we took care of these two areas, the city would be in compliance with the federal regulations. Rather than hire attorneys and fight things, I would like us to take some of our stormwater dollars and go out and start taking care of those houses in that area. We are paying that stormwater fee, and I believe that's a justifiable use of that stormwater fee. A lot of people up there are not flush with money and can't afford expensive repairs. When all these houses were built, it was legal to do it that way, and that's why they're done that way. Most of these houses were built in that timeframe, they're not old houses, they're newer houses, they're in-between houses. And, and like I say, let's use our stormwater dollars, let the citizens of that area and all of Waterloo benefit from those stormwater dollars. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest, and I will tell you that I think we have funding identified. There's lots more details in that that we need to work out because it, there's just a lot of moving parts to it, but I think we're close, and that's, and I know you're passionate about that, and so are we, so we're going to move forward with it. Thank you. Are there further questions on four, five, or six? Roll call vote, madam, I'm sorry, yes, sir, in the back. Please come to the microphone.
Yes, so then, give us your name and address, please.
I'm Tommy Anderson. I live in Pell, Iowa, but I represent Wayne Engineering. I'm just looking for some clarification on the refuse body that you have up to forbid, what body and chassis it's going to be on.
Okay, where's that at?
Thank you, that's number six, Mr. Rice.
Oh, I'm sorry, number six, okay.
Mark Rice, Public Works Director. What I've recommended to the council is the Peterbilt Three Twenty with the Wayne body.
On behalf of Wayne Engineering, we thank you very much for the city's business.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, appreciate it. Thanks, Mark. Okay, roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Next three, seven, eight, nine, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cole, or Ms. Cole, excuse me.
I move to adopt a resolution approving request by the City of Waterloo to name two new private streets as Cohen Lane and Keith Lane, generally located between Summerland Drive and Daisert Road, within tract B of Summerland Farms, and parcel number eight-eight-one-three dash one-three dash four-two-eight dash zero-three-nine. Item eight also a resolution setting the date of hearing as October twentieth to approve the adoption of the fiscal year 2015 to 2019 capital improvement program for the City of Waterloo, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. Nine is a resolution approving an amended development agreement with two changes to the previous development agreement with the Waterloo Community School District for the development of a new bus barn and maintenance facility located at sixteen oh-one and sixteen twenty-four Blackhawk Street.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding those three, seven, eight, or nine?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn?
That development agreement, I strongly oppose changing that development agreement. We spent a lot of time bargaining, good faith. Noel gave us a handout. The schools are getting property worth seven-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars. We're getting land worth three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. I think the schools can afford to take down that building.
They are going to, Tom.
Except that the development agreement change says when we split the proceeds of the sale of the land, we got to pay for the demolition first, which essentially means we're going to pay for the demolition.
I'll let Noel explain that, but I don't think, I don't think that's what that means at all, Tom.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, that'd be the second one on the two changes to be made. Basically, what it says, if the city sells the land and makes a profit, it would go toward their demolition costs first, so if we sell it for a dollar, we will not have to pay anything to the demolition, we'd split fifty cents. But it's only if we make a profit on the sale of the orange land that the demolition costs would be repaid.
But I thought it said the proceeds, not profit, proceeds, so if we sell it, you know, we always get, we buy this, we get land and then we always give it away. One of these times, it'd be great if we could sell it and make a profit, Skogman or somebody would buy it from us. If we sold it to Skogman for five-hundred thousand dollars, we're going to pay two-hundred to tear the building down.
That'd be correct, if we did sell it for an actual profit, obviously, our intent, normally, anytime we sell land for a dollar, is to also get a timeline on commitment of development to occur because we're going to make a lot more taxable value and increases over the years in a one-time amount of payment, so our goal would be to get someone that's willing to develop that in a timely manner.
I just don't understand why we're always on the short end of the stick. We just, I don't agree with that. I don't support that resolution.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, and Noel?
Yes, sir. Mr. Jones?
What happens if this isn't approved or this item does not pass?
Essentially, we'd have to go back to the school boards and met, they both approved it in this version. We'd have to go back to them to see if they would go back to the original one that we approved. Obviously, we went first, we were all setting it for dates of hearing, ours went first. When it got to their boards, they had these discussions to make these, what we believe to be minor changes based on our intent moving ahead, so if it's not approved here tonight, essentially, the agreement would be null and void as it is now because they approved it in this version that we're asking you to approve tonight.
I don't think that there's any intent for us to sell that land for a profit. We haven't in the past. We acquire development land, as we have from the school system and many other areas, and then we sell it for a dollar with the development agreement that points out what we're going to do with the land, so I think the opportunity, the opportunity to sell that for a profit is almost zero. Would you agree with that, Noel?
I would agree.
Forrest, could we, let me, I'll recognize you, if you'll let us finish our discussion first, okay? Is there further, Mr. Schmidt?
Just what was the other change, just so we have a complete?
The other change is we had wording in the agreement at the time that we approved it, there was some, it really doesn't even involve us, but it's in the agreement since it's a three-party agreement. There was some wording in there about some pavement improvements between, that in exchange for the Met land, that the schools are going to do on Met property. They weren't sure at the time of our agreement who was actually going to do the improvements, if the schools were going to do it as part of their project or reimburse Met. They've since decided that the school will do it as part of their project. Met wanted that changed to note that that was how it was going to be done. We left it in there as an either-or, so really, in effect, for our purposes, there's no change there at all, but since there is an actual change in the wording, we have to approve it that way.
Thanks. So, Mr. Jones?
Just to follow up on Mr. Lynn's comment, isn't the property that the city is exchanging worth more than the orange land, including tearing down the school?
I do not have my, let me, oh, we're going to file, hang on.
Hey, Noel?
Is that, is that the numbers, huh? What we were asked to do was to kind of put a comparison together of what the parcels that were being put into the essential trade of school, Met, and city land. By assessed values, the land, the city land going to the schools was worth seven-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-six-hundred. The city land going to Met for their future project, and that's contingent upon a future project by them, so it's put in there as a, as a conditional sale in the agreement, was ninety-four thousand seven-hundred, so a total of city land value of eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-three-hundred. The Met land that was going to the city was sixteen thousand eight-hundred, and the school land or the former Orange School site is twenty-four acres in size. The value of that to the city was three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand nine sixty. We base that, the value, the city gained, the city is gaining property worth at three, about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand was based on fifteen thousand dollars per acre of land, which is what the new site, Orange School, was purchased for. The Waterloo Schools is gaining a land building, and we actually looked at that, again, the assessed value's a little bit higher, we valued it closer to four-hundred thousand because it's a forty thousand square foot building built in nineteen fifty-nine, nineteen sixty-one, with twelve-foot overhead doors, so we actually devalued it based on what the assessed value is probably at. As you may be aware, in looking at the county assessor site, a lot of times, the public land doesn't always get revalued every year because it's exempt from property taxes, so they don't pay as close attention to that as they do other tax-paying entities, so we did think that this is a comparable sale or swap for the project.
Thanks.
And Noel, the three-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand value of the orange land, that does not address the cost to demolish that building at all, which?
It does not. That would be, so I mean, you're, we're, we compared it to the best thing that we had to compare out there, which is vacant agricultural land that was built on for the school. You're correct, I mean, any, any private developer, someone that would be buying it outright would have to figure in the cost. I think the schools are estimating their cost to demolish that at six-hundred thousand between asbestos and demolition.
Six-hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a big, oh, number.
Well, in that case, then.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I, I understand Councilman Lynn's concern, and I think maybe Councilman Jones, too, but it does seem like this is a somewhat relative win-win situation, it may not be exactly the same, and, and again, if we were going to be making a profit, then I would understand the school's concern on that, but I don't anticipate how that's going to happen, and it just seems like this is far in a way the best use for these two sites. I think it's a great, great opportunity.
There's, there's a lot of collaboration going into this, which we always try to shoot for, and we think it's a, well, the numbers may not work out exactly, it's a win-win for both entities. Forrest, would you like to speak, please?
Yeah, just briefly. Forrest Dilwo, Seventeen Twenty-Five Huntington Road. You know, all these things look good. They're tiffed, they're kiras, and they're cluras. The taxpayers don't get any relief. Never any relief. If we give the land away for a dollar, we don't get any relief. We've given away a seven-hundred thousand dollar building, and, and we get nothing. I mean, would there be anything wrong with making a dollar or breaking even for the taxpayers who are paying all these bills? I'm not going to live long enough, I know, to see any relief on my taxes because you folks keep giving away and giving away and tiffing and kira, and it just never stops. You don't think of people like us when you're doing these agreements, you think of those people who aren't born yet because that's how long it'll be. Article in the paper the other days mentioned forty-some years of tiff downtown, forty-some years. I'm not going to live another forty years. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest. Are there further questions or comments regarding seven, eight, or nine?
Mr. Mayor?
One other person.
One more. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forrest Street. I was reading the paper this weekend about the school system and the proposed amendments, and talking with Forrest, if this has been going on for forty years, anybody that was sixty years old, which I'm older than that, and we haven't seen any money out of that for, for forty years, are dead and gone. So what good is this to relieve taxpayers of their burden? We're going to consider amending this agreement, and I'm hearing all these figures thrown out, and it sounds to me like it's a good balance if we sold it for the same amount that we're going to have invested in it, but not for a buck. Come on, guys. I asked you before on other meetings if it were your dollars that you were spending to tear this down, purchase it, et cetera, that, let's, let's go to the hotel down here, one-point-two million dollars we spend as taxpayers to tear it down, to purchase it, haul it all away, and we're sold, we're going to sell it for a buck? For your money, would you do it?
Yes.
I wouldn't.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much, thanks for your comments. Are there further comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
On number eight, which is the hearing to approve the adoption of fiscal year capital improvements program?
Yes, sir.
I was hoping we could have a work session on that to really talk about that two-hundred or twenty-two million dollars of spend that we're going to do.
Okay. Noel, how do we usually address this hearing? It escapes me right now.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, we definitely have a work session to talk over the projects. Obviously, as part of the capital improvements program, every year, we annually do that, we invite and make those meetings open to the public, we make them open to the council, so there's a lot of open discussion on the projects which, with each department as we go through the process, so we've had a lot of discussion on them, but this is kind of the finalized projects, I mean, again, if we'd like a presentation, we'd have to figure out kind of?
Yeah.
How to do that on, it's kind of a summary sheet or something like that, because obviously, the majority of departments in the city have projects in here that they, that they have them for, so we'd probably have to have all the departments available if there's any questions.
Okay. We can certainly do that, though, David.
Okay.
It's October twentieth is the hearing date, so we have?
Next Monday.
Just next Monday before, is that all there is, before?
Yeah.
Only one Monday before the twentieth?
Since the sixth.
Okay. We'll schedule a work session for next Monday, to get with Noel and see how much time he anticipates that would take, and we will do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further comments on seven, eight, or nine? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes, on seven, eight, no on nine.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, those motions carry. Let's do the next three, please, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole?
I move to adopt a resolution approving an agreement with H.R. Green Inc. in the amount not to exceed sixty-five hundred dollars for the preparation of two applications to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, including a community-wide brownfields hazardous substances assessment grant totaling two-hundred thousand dollars, and a petroleum products brownfields program grant totaling two-hundred thousand dollars, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Eleven is a resolution setting the date of hearing as October twentieth to approve the request by David and Beth Delacardell at four-seventy-two Progress Avenue to vacate the thirty-foot platted building line located parallel to the south property line of Lot Forty-Seven of Oak Park Edition, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. Twelve is a resolution setting the date of hearing as October twentieth to authorize the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at five-oh-six Reed Street for ten-thousand-one-hundred dollars plus cost to Kim and Otto Matlin, and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Second. Good, thank you. Counsel, comments or questions regarding ten, eleven, and twelve?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn?
Are we wasting our money on number ten? Or if, if there's?
Well, I certainly hope we're not wasting our money.
Well, I guess, I'm confused. If they're suing us, why would they give us four-hundred thousand dollars?
Well, I, I think they suing us is, and I don't think they are suing us, and I think it's a totally different situation for us applying for grants to improve land, to clean up brownfield land, and I'm not exactly sure what a petroleum products brownfield program is, but both of those are opportunities for us to get money from the federal government to accommodate potential businesses in some of our most contaminated areas. We do this quite often. Noel, please, help me.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, sorry. Been up here too many times today. We definitely don't think we're wasting our money. It is a different kind of division of the EPA, this is the one that goes out and is trying to be proactive and help identify brownfield, grayfield sites. We've utilized these funds before, we're actually on the tail end of closing out two grants exist, in existence, so we're looking to replace them with these. We primarily focus on the midport and the Broadway corridor and the downtown area with these grants in our, in our application to the EPA. these grants in our application to the EPA. Over the years, this has helped us to move ahead with a lot of projects, specifically in the Rath area, along Highway sixty-three, and identifying some sites that otherwise people may have thought were contaminated. The assessment grants allow us to go in there, do phase one, do phase two, and show people that these are actually clean sites and try to interest developers to go into them. Mayor, the reason it's divided out into hazardous substances and petroleum is based on the federal funding sources. Some of them are from gas tax and things like that, so they break out into different categories, and obviously, we try to work on both aspects.
Okay.
Noel, we have a city website that focuses on all the progress we made in some of our brownfield areas, correct?
We do. The new Waterloo.com. I definitely would encourage all of you to go look at that. It has before and after pictures of the CMC site, the JMB site, some of the bigger ones we worked on as well, but a lot of the assessment sites.
Further questions? Madam Clerk, please. Ten, eleven, and twelve?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motions carry. Thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Fourteen is deleted, please. Mr. Whopper, you've asked a couple of times.
Uh-huh. Carolyn, she's fast.
She is. She's quick.
Number thirteen is a resolution setting the date of hearing as October twentieth, twenty-fourteen, to approve a request by Valentine Enterprises, LLC, at seven-twenty-nine West Airline Highway for a site plan amendment to the M-two-P Plan Industrial District to allow for the establishment of a new auto recycling salvage yard located at seven-twenty-nine West Airline Highway, and instruct City Clerk to publish notice. Number fifteen is a resolution approving the request by the Highway Department of Enterprises, LLC, for the final plot of the replot of the Summerland Farms Lot One into twelve-plot industrial, or excuse me, residential subdivision located at the intersection of Summerland Drive and Dyzer Road. Sixteen is a resolution approving sanitary sewer plans that will serve Southport Third Edition and the construction and permit application agreement with the Highway Department of Natural Resources for the RISE-funded road project Geraldine Road Phase Three, as submitted by J.D. Engineering of Waterloo, Iowa, and Heather Azeem, Mayor and City Clerk, to execute said documents.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those three, thirteen, fifteen, or sixteen? Mr. Morsy?
Well, Noel, regarding number thirteen, with it having been unanimously voted down at the Planning and Zoning Commission last meeting, and that included not just a site plan, but also the special permit, they are trying to do an round, or they're trying to come here and have us overturn planning and zoning, I take it?
Noel Anderson, City Planning and Development Director. Yes, they are. Generally, when we have a recommendation of denial, especially because that requires a three-quarter supermajority vote by council, we normally ask the applicants if they want to move ahead, and they do want to.
Okay. Very good. Roll call vote, please, on those three.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
No on thirteen, yes fifteen and sixteen.
Mr. Hart?
No on thirteen, yes on fifteen and sixteen.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No on thirteen, yes on fifteen and sixteen.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No on thirteen, yes on fifteen and sixteen.
Okay. I'm gonna have to have some clarification here. I've never had motion to set a date of hearing fail before. I don't know what that does. Do you, Mr. Attorney?
Dave Zeller for Assistant City Attorney. I've never had it happen either, but for right now, let's just consider it as failed, and if we find otherwise, we can always reset it.
Okay. So item thirteen fails, item fifteen and sixteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Does that pose a legal problem to the city?
I don't know. I don't know. I believe that the gentleman from Valentine Enterprises has the right to appeal the decision of P&amp;Z to the council, and that was this request. Now, we have now voted to not hear his appeal, so that's gonna be an attorney question.
Can I make a motion to reconsider so we can put it back on?
No, no, I don't think so, at this point. Yeah, it's, there's, the motion's been made and the vote has been taken, Pat. We're gonna, we're gonna have to figure out how to figure this one out. I'm not sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Wait, just a second. Let me catch up.
Seventeen through twenty.
Let's do seventeen through twenty, please. Mr. Hart?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving notice of intent for NPDES coverage under general permit to the Highway Department of Natural Resources for FY two thousand and fifteen Geraldine Road Phase Three, contract number RN-eight-one-five-five parentheses seven-four-two-dash-nine-D-dash-zero-seven, authorize Mayor to execute said document. Eighteen, I move to approve, move to adopt a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Story Construction of Ames, Iowa, in the amount of three million, two-hundred-six-thousand, three-hundred-and-ten dollars and thirty-two cents for the FY two thousand and thirteen Stormwater Pump Station, Bergen Creek, Westfield Avenue, and Vinton Street, contract number eight-three-one, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond. Nineteen, I move to adopt a resolution approving request for temporary no parking on the northwest side of Fitzway Drive. Twenty, I move to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to KWS Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and approve contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the safe routes to school Irving Elementary Traffic Signal Project at West Fifth and Baltimore Streets, and authorize Mayor and City Clerk to execute said document.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those four? Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, or twenty?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lynn?
I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
What's the construction out on Fitzway Drive?
I'm not sure that there is any, maybe there is. Sandy, what's...
During construction, as a contractor, we staging the construction equipment at the south side.
Okay. I'm not sure exactly. Claussen Engineering is the one who contacted me, asking if we could allow no parking on one side because they were gonna stage their equipment on the other side.
I'm just curious if there's a big project.
Dennis?
I don't know.
Dennis Clark, General Manager, Warley Water Works. We had a main break under Highway twenty three years ago, and we're doing a directional drill underneath Highway twenty at Amesboro, and some of that staging will occur in this area.
Okay. And while you're there, another question. Are we, we're absolutely sure that the schools are gonna take out that temporary stop sign between Baldamar and what's the next street?
Western.
Western? Yes.
Spend that kind of money?
I did speak with Marty Metcalf about that. Yes.
Thanks.
Very good. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor? Dennis, I know this is a little belated, but just talk a little bit about item number eighteen, all the benefits of that work.
Oh, Dennis Gents, I was looking at Dennis Clark thinking, I don't think it's his project. Go ahead, dude. He's my guest.
Dennis Gents, Assistant City Engineer. These three lift stations, Stormwater Pump Stations, were constructed with EDA funds, and that was a hundred percent funding, and of course, these are providing much better protection during storm water events, you know, high water events in these areas.
Can you kind of identify the areas that are gonna be positively impacted? Are you familiar with that, Dennis, or is that not your area?
I really didn't work on this project, so...
Now, what's done is done, but I wanted to do a little feather in your cap.
Yeah, thanks. Anything further on those four? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Very good. The motions carry. Twenty-one, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number twenty-one is a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second time in ordinance vacating a twenty-foot platted building line located on Lot Two of Melter Park Edition of four-nineteen Holmes Street for the purpose of constructing a three-season addition, and that's on the request of Sue Schuman and Sarah Kirstenbrock for that purpose.
Second. Very good. There's a motion in second, counsel. Do we have further comments about this item on the second reading? Madam Clerk, it's a motion, or it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
No.
Very good. The motion carries, four to three.
I think it was denied, was it? Four, three, four, was it?
Three, four.
Four, no.
I got three no's and four yeses.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that what you got? Yeah.
I said yes.
Yeah, I got, I got, I got four to the affirmative and three negative.
You're correct.
Okay. Yeah, so it passes.
Good.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the rolls.
Second.
Very good. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion and to consider and pass for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
And another roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. That motion carries also. Thank you very much. Items twenty-two and twenty-three, I think we can do together, please. Mr. Hart?
Twenty-two, I move to instruct traffic operations superintendent to prepare plan specifications form of contract in twenty-two for improvements to the intersection of Amesboro and Downing Avenue, and twenty-three to the intersections of Fletcher and University Avenue.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding either one of these items? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, for twenty-two and twenty-three, I move to receive and file plan specifications form of contract.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries also.
Mr. Mayor, for both those items, I move to adopt a resolution preliminary approving plan specifications form of contract.
Second. And that's a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, for both those items, I move to adopt a resolution setting date of bid opening as October sixteen, two thousand and fourteen, and hearing as October twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, and instruct City Clerk to publish notice of plan specifications form of contract.
Second. Madam Clerk, those are roll call votes, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. Those motions carry, twenty-two and twenty-three. Let's do twenty-four by itself, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
Move to instruct Leisure Services Director to prepare specifications, bid documents, et cetera, for the purchase of two two thousand and fifteen Chevrolet Colorado trucks.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Why do we specify the model? Where they're just specs?
Paul Hitting, Leisure Services Director. The midsize or small pickup is not available on a Ford anymore, and we feel that we're gonna get at least three or four bids on the Chevy. So that's kind of the specific size truck that we, that we want. That's why we're specifying.
Further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to receive and file specifications, bid documents, et cetera.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries also.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution preliminary approving specifications, bid documents, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution setting date of bid opening as October twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, and public hearing as October twenty-seven, two thousand and fourteen, and instruct City Clerk to publish a notice of specifications, bid documents, et cetera, and taking of bids.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
That motion carries. Item twenty-five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item twenty-five is a motion instruct the Community Planning and Development Director to prepare plan specification form of contract, et cetera, and ask for the demolition site clearance services for sixty-seven Franklin Street, one-thirty-four Dearborn Street, five-twenty Cottage, eight-twenty Fowler, four-twenty Dawson, and four-oh-nine State Street.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morsy?
Noel. In looking through the information that was put in our packets, some of these houses look to be in pretty good shape, or is that just the cover belying what's inside?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I would say that the, sometimes the assessor's pictures can be deceiving, because they may be a couple of years old. I know that Dave Zeller's probably been through them, some of them, but normally, the building officials, staff, and the code enforcement staff go through and determine whether or not they believe that they're rehabable, and all these have been determined for demolition.
And just comparing this to five-oh-six Reed Street, which, you know, when I go by there, I don't know if you had went by there, but that looked like something that wouldn't be rehabilitatable, but in fact, it is gonna be rehabilitated, and I'm just wondering, was there any effort put in, or is any effort ever put in to seeing if there are interested parties that will come forward and rehabilitate some of these homes, rather than demolishing them?
Sure, we, yes, we definitely would work to rehabilitate as many as possible. A lot of times, more of the determining factors, I believe, are on the interior parts of the house and how much leakage or something like that has happened through roof disrepair, roof failure in some of these houses. So a lot of them look in rough shape on the outside. It's really getting into the interior, how bad a shape they're in, or if the foundation's cracking and all that, it kind of pushes it one way or the other.
So approving this tonight doesn't take off the table that if interested parties or party came forward, they could purchase this rather than having it demolished?
You know, this is just to send out the plan specs and form. You know, we had that with another one on Mulberry where we had a late party come in and was interested in it, and we were able to take it off the demolition bid and replace it with another house in really bad shape. So I'd say there's still time for any interested parties if they really wanna come forward on these.
Okay, thanks.
But could I clarify that, Noel? Because what we are doing is we are soliciting bids on those houses. If that parameter should change, the bid would obviously be different.
Correct.
So if there is any indication that any of those houses could be rehabable, that determination should be, I know it's not, but I don't know what else to use, Carolyn, to be rehabbed, that determination needs to be made relatively soon.
Yeah, I would say time is definitely of the essence, you know, because we are moving ahead with it, but if there's an interested party that comes forward, we'd be more willing to talk to them.
And I just didn't wanna give Mr. Morsy the indication that there's all kinds of time here, and people could come forward.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. That motion carries also. Thank you very much. Items twenty-two and twenty-three, I think we can do together, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Twenty-two, I move to instruct traffic operations superintendent to prepare plan specifications form of contract, et cetera, for the purchase of two 2015 Chevrolet Colorado trucks.
Second.
Council, you have any questions regarding either one of these items? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, for twenty-two and twenty-three, I move to receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And that resolution passes, and twenty-five passes. Thank you. Item twenty-six, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Who's that? Mr. Hart?
Myself.
Please.
Make a motion to approve change order number seventeen for net increase of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars for work performed by Crowell and Subsidiaries Inc. of New Hampton, Iowa, on the FY 2012 West Shawless Road, Amesboro Avenue, Contract Number seven eight four.
Second.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones?
What did we actually get for that forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars?
Dennis, please.
Dennis Skins, Assistant City Engineer. What would be installed under this change order would be similar to what you would see as a traffic signal pole and arm, but instead of the traffic signal heads, there would be a red flashing light with a stop sign on both the arm and the pole. And those would be on both approaches to Kimball Avenue on the Shawless legs of the intersection.
Ames.
Shawless and Kimball. Be on the Shawless legs of the intersection.
Okay, okay.
So, is it an overhead light?
Yes.
It is.
Okay, further? Anyone else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. That's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. It's time for oral presentations. It is time for anyone that would like to address the mayor or council to come forward. I do have one gentleman, our good friend Dick Hastings from Memorial Hall, has called in and requested extra time to address the hall, or address the council on Memorial Hall issues. So, Dick, please. We're still going to have to give you a name and address even though I identified you.
My name is Dick Hastings. I live at 1256 Black Off Road. And, just a few facts for you, for the Veterans Memorial Hall. The City Fathers, back in 1912, had enough foresight that they got a bond passed for sixteen thousand bucks. That's what it cost to build that building over on Cedar Street. And it took them about three years to get blueprints and get all the plans done before they started construction. And on December 10th, 1915, was the first time that building was used as a meeting. And just a couple other little facts. After World War I, when the soldiers brought back the flu epidemic from Europe, they had the two hospitals in town, they were overflowing, the Red Cross, and that took over the Veterans Hall and used it as a hospital. In doing some research there, I found out there was a number of people who never walked out of that building. They were carried out. Right now, the building is a hundred years old, or will be a hundred years old this next year. And right now, we need some work done on the building. We need to seal up a lot of the leaks. We got leaks on the roof, we got leaks around the foundation. And if we let it go too long, it's not going to last another hundred years. So, we just want to make this information knowledgeable to you guys and see what, we'll just have to sit back and see what happens. But a hundred years is a long time before, you know, the next hundred. So, we could, how should I say this? There's a number of leaks around the base because of the sidewalks on three sides of the building. It's butted right up against the building. But over the years, there's been a slight leak each down, you know, washing down the foundations. And then that gets eventually into the building itself. And we have peeling paint. It's just becoming to be a big mess. So, I thank you very much.
Dick, thank you. And just, you know, I don't know if you listened earlier tonight, but we did approve tonight a contract for a little over seven thousand dollars for painting of that building.
Good.
So, there will be some improvements done there. And I have your items to be repaired that you turned in. I will, I will have to tell you that there's some of these issues that I hope you guys can get some volunteers to do some of the window cleaning and so forth and so on. And I will address, council, that we really have never had a line item, budget item for major repairs for Veterans Hall. As that building gets older, I think it's something we're probably going to have to address to identify some funds to make some structural improvements to that building. We've always been able to just kind of get by with borrowing money from here or from there and so forth and kind of doing what is necessary. We pay the utilities, and we did have a cleaning contract down there. But beyond that, we don't have much budgeted for that building. So, some of the things that Dick's talking about are not small repairs. And I agree that we need to keep that building in good shape, and we're going to have to put our thinking caps on and try to identify some funding to do some, some of the major repairs down there. Dick, thank you guys for what you do.
I'd just say one more thing. When we have conventions or reunions coming into town for the Sullivan Brothers Museum and Convention Hall, we usually end up doing the memorial service at the Veterans Hall.
I know you do.
And we've had a lot of people would come in there. Well, this year, we only had two of them, but the USS Enterprise aircraft carrier was our last one. And people are amazed that we still have a building that looks like it does right now, but they don't see the bad parts. They just see what's out in front. And we tried to camouflage that.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for what you do. Appreciate it. You bet. Anyone else, please?
Rick Rattaro, 1838 West Street, Department B. Okay, I'm a veteran also, and I'll talk to people about this. The main thing for me is the gutter system. I talked to people three years ago about this, going on three years, and nothing's been done. Because the new gutters are put on, no painting. That's one thing. And also, right there at the roofline, it's faceable in from the river, the main, I got a buck, I left a contract for you, what it costs to get that done. That's where a lot of the leaks come from. That's what I got it done also. That's the main thing, right there, a lot of water.
Okay. Thanks, Rick. And again, I think it is something that we're going to have to address.
This is the last item night, I promise. Item number four on the stormwater, I would like to mention that the people have been out there with the trucks, they've been cammering and cleaning lines in preparation for the slip fit. They've been working the second shift out there. It looks like they're doing everything they can to get that done positively for the sanitation department.
Thank you, Forrest.
David Drier, 3145 West Fourth Street. In addressing this TIF stuff, I was in Cedar Falls.
Addressing the what?
I'm sorry?
Addressing the what?
The TIF districts.
Oh, okay, TIF, I'm sorry.
I was in Cedar Falls the other day in Industrial Park, and I noticed that Kraft Cochran is in Cedar Falls now. And I thought we had moved a hundred percent taxpaying business from Amesboro to a TIF district, gave them some money, gave them some incentive to move out on Highway 63, and now I see they're in Cedar Falls. I guess my question is, is if they got some TIF money, if they got some tax abatement, and they've moved out before that time limit's up, have they paid us back?
Yes, they paid a hundred, was it a hundred and sixty or a hundred and ninety thousand?
Hundred and sixty-eight thousand, twenty dollars.
Hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. They, and we didn't move them out there, David. They requested to go out there. They requested the incentives. We gave it to them. They left early. They repaid us.
Okay. But again, they, they were a hundred percent taxpaying entity where they were at, and then we allowed them because they requested to move into, you know, hey, I can get free money, I'll go too. Thank you.
I'm a little confused on that, but that, that's fine.
Their existing building continued to pay taxes.
Yeah.
Good evening. Josh Wilson, 28, 31 Saratoga Drive in Waterloo. I have just three issues, and they should be pretty painless here this evening. But I had a question. I want to thank the mayor and the city clerk, Suzie. They were helpful when I brought this issue up the first time. But it is political season, and I am in politics. So, I have this question asked of me a lot every day, but regarding political yard signs, or really any signage for that matter that's placed in city, on city property, I just didn't know what the procedure was for the removal of that. The addresses I did send in at one point were taken care of, so I appreciate that. But moving forward, does that have to be code enforcement that removes those signs, or can anyone remove signs that are on city property for any campaign? It's really a bipartisan issue that the problem is with both Republicans and Democrats. But also, like Walgreens on Kimball has, you know, they're advertising for flu shots on city property with signs too. You see garage sales. So, it's not just political. I guess I was just wondering, the code enforcement, what they're doing to, I mean, I can't drive around town a single day without seeing one that's on city property. So, that was issue number one.
Josh, I'll answer that, please, if you don't mind, before you go to number two.
Oh, yeah, sure, thank you.
None of those issues are top priorities to code enforcement. They are primarily code enforcement issues. When we receive complaints, as we did from you, about the political signs, we do go out and remove them. It will be an ongoing issue from now until there's no more politics in the nation, you know?
Right.
Volunteers put them out, people put them out, they don't know that they're violating